Heavy machinery, masonry work, concrete work, asphalt work, we do it all. This right here is the king of blue collar work. A water distribution maintenance technician, we maintain the water system. We provide a very vital source, being water, to all of our customers and residents in Manatee County.
If you enjoy getting dirty, if you enjoy working hard, if you enjoy fixing things and repairing things and maintaining things, this is a great job for somebody who needs to stay busy.
When you pull up on the job and there's water down the street, there's road missing, the bigger and bad of the job, the more I want it. The big line breaks, there's nothing that beats it.
This job takes grit, takes determination, and it takes a wanting, a desire to work hard.
You can't be afraid to get dirty. You've got to be ready for it. You've got to welcome it. And it's something that we don't just mind. We look forward to it.
Hi, my name is Kyle with Manatee County Utilities. Come work with me as a water maintenance technician and get ready to get dirty.
A new fitness and recreation center, dual gymnasiums, and a new splash pad and upgraded pool deck? Get ready to sweat, splash, and play on this episode of Manatee on the Move. Hi, I'm Commissioner Amanda Ballard, and I'm proud to represent District Two in Manatee County. Even though it's gone by many names since it was built in 1962, John Marble Park has always served as a recreation spot for youth and families, offering everything from a way to cool off, play tennis and pool, and shoot some hoops. And while the styles may have changed through the years, our commitment to continuing to provide you with healthy recreation has not. That's why we're excited to announce that we're breathing new life into this over half-century-old facility. The centerpiece of the new and improved John Marble Park will be the dual gymnasium and attached recreation center. The dual gymnasium will house two high school basketball courts that can also be used as three volleyball courts or six pickleball courts. This will give camps and leagues the space and accessibility they deserve and provide additional opportunities for your kids to experience more great Manatee County youth programming. The recreation center will feature a state-of-the-art indoor fitness area, three multipurpose rooms, a catering kitchen, and a kids' club. Host a party or sneak in a workout while the kids keep themselves busy with the freshly resurfaced pool area that will be expanded around the existing pool. The addition of a splash pad will add a little variety to your visit, while an inviting pool pavilion will offer some much-needed shade. Once complete, the change in appearance of this well-used facility will be dramatic. But it's the things that you may not notice right away that will make the all-new John Marble an even greater asset to Manatee County. The expanded right-of-way and dual entrances on 37th Street will make getting in and out that much easier. And the expanded ADA parking lot will accommodate the demand for this exciting new facility. A new pedestrian trail that connects to the existing playground and pavilion, as well as an additional park pavilion, complete with restrooms, will encourage you to explore the entirety of this expanded park. And a new walkway to the north will ensure access to the existing bocce ball courts and the future proposed tennis and basketball courts. Giving our citizens the quality of life they deserve has always been our top priority. And we hope these improvements continue to give you the opportunity to live your best life right here in the premier place to live, work, and play.
Today is Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, and welcoming you to a Board of County Commissioners meeting. We're opening up a public hearing on the adoption of our final budget. We're going to start this meeting with a pledge of allegiance and with a prayer. Commissioner Thatcher, if you could please lead us in prayer, after which Commissioner Bearden will lead us in the pledge. If you're able at this time, please rise.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lord, we thank you that you are good and that you do good to each one of us. Lord, we pray that not just today, but that every day, you will continue to lead us and guide us. Lord, we know that ultimately, there is no issue with your goodness, with your power, with your love. Sometimes the issue comes down to what we do with it. So, Lord, I pray that you would help us to follow you, to make the right decisions, to follow after you each and every day, including tonight, as we have this meeting. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to their republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. So, I think I'll just turn this right over to our CFO, Sheila McLean. Ma'am.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Deputy County Administrator DePaul, County Attorney. This afternoon, we present the final and second public hearing towards the adoption of the Budget of Manatee County Fiscal Year 2024. For those out there that are watching, we have, as you can see on the screen and you will see, we have created a barcode. So if you're watching, you want to have a copy of the presentation, you can scan it, and automatically, the presentation uploads into your device, whether it's a laptop, or an iPad, or your own phone. So with that said, thank you so much. Let's get started. The goals for this meeting today is, do a couple of things. One, I would like to recap on the process of the fiscal year 24 really quickly towards today that we are adopting the budget. Secondly, I would like to discuss the funding sources, just give a little bit of status and an update on those, especially on those that affect the major funding sources that affect the CIP itself. Third, we would like to talk about the capital improvement, do a little recap as well, and then talk about the infrastructure sales tax. As this is a public hearing, in order for those changes that have been happening, as per ordinance, I have to actually make the acknowledgement of the changes that have happened in the CIP so that they become official and the project and equipment list get changed as well. And also, I would like to talk about the debt plan that we have in the CIP. And finally, we'll talk into the mileage a little bit about the reserves very lightly. And then finally, we get into the motions to approve the resolutions towards adoption of the fiscal year 24 budget. The fiscal year 24 budget towards adoption is a total gross, gross total budget of $2,924,212,692, with the net budget of $1,220,626,476. The capital improvement brings in into the CIP plan from '24 through '28, a total of $2,189,456,681, with a fiscal year 24 investment of $685.7 million. For a total CIP '24-'28, inclusive of existing projects and future projects of $3.7 billion, by far the largest CIP that Manatee County has seen. But with the theme that we are going to complete all those main projects that the counties, the Board of County Commissioners set forth to complete. In a recap to the business operations budget for '24, we talked about segmented the budget into two main sections. One, we talked about business operations. Second, we talked about the capital improvement plan. With the elements of the FY '24 budget, we discussed 14 departments budgets with 67 programs. We discussed other programs, in total nine, which included the courts and judicials, the economic development, general government, other community services, and so forth. We also had a discussion about constitutional officers. We talked about our debt service plan, our debt service outstanding. We talked about transfer transfers that occurred to help finance the capital improvement plan, the capital improvement plan itself, and then finally reserves. To put the highlights in the business operations side, for county departments, we pledging an investment on the 14 departments of $537 million, being utilities the largest budget and public works following in itself. When we talked about constitutional officers and the judicial programs, we bought a total of $232 million, of which, in addition to those support costs to the constitutional officers of $6.6 million. This budget is approving 58 new positions into the budget, with a larger investment into positions into the utility department and the public safety, followed by community and veteran services and convention and visitors bureau. This is all in association and expectation of those new projects that we'll be completing in FY '24 and some in FY '23 and of '23 to bring the operations into power and increase levels of service. When we talked about more about business operations, we cannot just not talk about the effects of the workforce and how we are addressing the workforce increases and the benefits and compensation. Number one, as one of the major benefits that the county has is our health insurance. It's one of the strongest in the state of Florida, and we are presenting a one increase in both employee and employer at 1% with a very minimal increase to the employees of approximately $10, $10 to $11 to $35, depending on the plan and the tier where they are living. This is definitely by far is one of the significant benefits to the employee and is a really large recruitment impact to the county. Also, we are bringing forward a salary compensation of 5% increase to the employee of which 3% is the COLA, the cost of living raise, and the other 2% is a lump sum one-time payment to the employee based on their performance throughout the year fiscal year '23. Now, I had told the board that I was going to come back and talk about our strongest funding sources and where we are. One, because we are starting a new fiscal year and we're ending a new fiscal year '23, and now we can say with more certainty where is '23 going to end, even though these are just preliminary because they're not finalized and they're not audited. But I'm bringing the actuals and estimates that we know today we can make. So when we talk about the major revenues that we have, we know that ad valorem is one of the highest, 33% of the total budget of the county, followed by tourist development tax, sales tax, infrastructure sales tax, gas tax, and impact fees. Being the last three the most impactful into the capital improvement plan, it's very worthy to talk about because it does affect the plan in itself throughout the five years of the plan. Let's talk about ad valorem. Back on the work session that we had back in March, we talked about estimates. Where is the ad valorem going to do? Normally, we estimate and we actually, our actual collections are like approximately 96% of our total budget. It's kind of like the association and the history that we've had. So, as of August, we had collected $340 million. We estimate that at that point, we've already collected almost 97% of that revenue source, but we estimate that an increase of 15% as we knew. So this is by far have been, you know, from our estimate back in March, we increased another 2% into the actuals. Tourist development tax. So, right now, as we know, we levy five pennies of the tourist development tax, and tourist development tax has been one of the strongest that has kept increasing even through the pandemic. Our estimates were coming at $30 million, where today, we are projecting that it'll end at 31.3, with a differential of $2.8 million, which is a 10% increase from last year. What does that tell us is that the opportunity for levying another additional six penny is possible, and we have actually passed that. So next year, we would be starting the process with Department of Revenue to be looking into that. Let's talk about the half-cent sales tax. It's another stronger, strongest funding source. We had collected $32 million as of August. We estimate that as the end of fiscal year '23, $42 million is going to be the total collected for an increase of 11% from last year or $4.3 million. Moving into the infrastructure sales tax. The increase from previous year has been a 12% increase. Again, we had estimated in back in March a 14% increase. As we know now, it had kind of like gone to come up at 12%, but with the year is not over, there is still a last quarter realignment that actually will take it far out. I just wanted to keep that conservative and not estimate that because we don't know what the summer is, kind of like seasonal item for us, and so then that true-up will be even larger. So it'll take us even higher. So let's talk about those funding sources that affect the CIP. And that is kind of like I'm presenting it a little bit different so that you can see the impact out into the five years of where this revenue stream is coming. Gas tax is one of those funding sources. This right now is, we don't know what the fate of it is going to be in the upcoming years, but we do know that in the next five years, it's going to kind of like remain constant. It's what we have been seeing in the trend. So, right now, we collect nine cents of gas tax. The historical trend shows these gas taxes have been coming since 2019 very steady. In it, we kind of like projected a little bit lower, so it kind of like dives a little bit into our projections. This is one source that we have kept in the CIP a little bit more conservative. We haven't tagged a lot of projects into it so that we are kind of like holding that back to help boost the other projects as they're coming into the higher estimates. Projects that we have used into the CIP from gas tax have been the upper Manatee River Road for the bridge itself, Lorraine Road, Lena Road, and so some debt service payment gets paid out of gas taxes as well. Talking about impact fees. So let's talk about transportation. Transportation, as we know, has four different areas divided of the county, the northeast, northwest, southeast, and southwest. So, our beginning balance for fiscal year '23, we are estimating that our impact fees for transportation, which are the most attributed in growth to the northeast and the southeast, are going to come higher by $16.6 million. That's based on what we know today, what the actuals collected. So we still have like one more month to collect. So it is a very strong source right now. And so anything that differential is going to do is going to increase that beginning fund balance that you see up in the lower left-hand corner at the $21 million. Until the fiscal year end is completed and we have audited numbers, I do not adjust that into our books. So take that $16 million and you add it to that 21, and it'll be even more beneficial for the CIP as we go along, attempting to reach any inflation that's hitting our projects and so forth. So we are in a good, in a good place for this revenue source to do. You will see on the northeast and fiscal year '24, I have a negative number in there. Well, that one is, as conservative as we are, we have kind of like, will be adjusted with the increment that we see of the 16 million, so I'm not concerned. We will be realigning this number, and as you see over in the five years, this doesn't get affected at all. More of the impact fees for parks and libraries. This is impact fees that have maintained a steady growth rate. And over the years into the CIP plan, our estimates for '23 are showing like a $1.7 million increase above from what we have estimated. So an increment again to the beginning balance because that is the one that's going to start up the baseline for the fiscal year '24 cash. So anything that impacts us today will help us to mitigate any impacts in the next five-year plan. For law enforcement and impact in public safety, same thing. We have seen higher as though there has not been as large increases as other impact fees. It's just like a million-dollar increase estimate, but still, it is performing quite well. And of course, we have projects for the sheriff that are being identified in within these impact fees, like it is the fleet facility and so forth. So we do need every single bit of dollars that we can get to complete all these projects. Okay. Back, back. Back, back. All right. When we talk about the capital improvement plan, while she finds the slide, I had mentioned that our investment from the FY '24 to '28 capital improvement plan was $2.2 billion with an investment of $385 million in FY '24. This brings, this CIP brings 639 projects into the CIP with 67 new projects. 279 of the existing projects required additional investment. And in the all, because the largest investment is on the enterprise side at 57.5% of the, and this is all in addressing growth and capacity improvements into the utility system. When you talk about sources and uses, it's very important to note that the CIP doesn't stand alone with general revenue, that we have a very multitude of financing sources into the CIP that is helping us to leverage performing the CIP all the way to its fullest. On the uses side, as you can see, transportation is bringing a $1.1 billion of total projects into it. Most of it is the growth in the east side of Manatee County, but also on the southeast side of Manatee County.
Sheila, gas taxes is on there twice. I'm on sources, top left, number one, debt proceeds, general revenues, gas tax, and then number four, gas taxes.
Yes, so the gas taxes is the actual revenue source in itself, the debt service. The debt proceeds is because they're going to be paid, the debt service of those projects are going to be paid out of gas tax and general revenues.
Okay, you're listing the revenue sources to pay that. Okay, I got you. Thank you.
To break out into the districts, it's very important to know that we are very, we are spreading all of our efforts, and they are distributed in all of the districts of the county. You know, the higher the project, the larger the project number, the larger the amount. But in some instances, there were lesser number of projects, but higher volume in dollar, in dollar for those projects. It's very important to note, what are the main projects that are featuring the CIP? Among those, as we talked, the big six in the road improvements, Canal Road Corridor, the Moccasin Wallow Corridor, Premier Sports Complex Swimming Pool, the Bishop Animal Shelter, Buffalo Creek Soccer Expansion, Washington Park Projects, the MSO Fleet Facility, and the 60th Avenue Lorraine Road and upper Manatee River Road, among others. It's also noted to say, worth noting saying that in fiscal year '25, we're bringing the 44th Road Improvement, 44th Avenue East to 44th Plaza. On the enterprise for water and sewer, going along the lines with the transportation growth as well alongside, we have to bring the utility water and sewer capacity projects, some of those going again with Moccasin Wallow, Upper Manatee River Road, Forty-Fourth, the Southwest Water Reclamation Facility, and this the Southwest Water Reclamation Facility SCADA project. Very important to state, what are the execution factors of the CIP? Not everything for each one of the projects is attributed to multiple factors and it is not one-size-fits-all. We have many challenges. We can talk about, you know, availability of funding, availability of workforce, availability of materials, logistics, and timing of other projects, land acquisition, and most and above all, we have to talk about the final implication of finishing a project because it comes with recurring cost, maintenance, staffing, equipment. So now I'm going to talk about the infrastructure sales tax. The requirement, I have to do this for the public hearing to meet the requirements of the ordinance sixteen dot thirty-five dash thirty-five, where the changes to the project and equipment list have to be itemized and explained in order to be able to change the project and equipment list. The funding changes that happened on the IST were we added four projects, Moccasin Wallow Segment Three, Sixtieth Avenue East Buffalo Road, Mendoza Road to Buffalo Road Terminus, Erie Road, Sixty-Ninth Street East to Manatee Martha Road, and GT Bray Water Facility New Pump Room. We increased funding to four existing projects, Twenty-Sixth Avenue East to Twenty-Seventh Street East, Bishop Animal Shelter, Twenty-Seventh Street East, Thirty-Eighth Avenue East, Twenty-Sixth Avenue East, and Canal Road US Thirty-One from US Three-O-One to Seventeenth Street Segment One. At the same time, we removed two projects from the list. That would be County Road Six Seventy-Five Soccer Fields and the EMS Station Alerting. Talking about changes in location, in scope and rationale, those were changes in additions and and deletions. These ones are changes to location, scope, and rationale. From location, we changed the first project was to change the location that says states to Forty-Fifth Street East, to change it to say to east of Maple Drive South. The second project was GT Bray Park Shade Structure, no exact location. Now we have a location, so now it states the address, fifty-five oh two Thirty-Third Avenue Drive West. For scope changes, on the Coquina Beach Pavilions Replacement, we changed the wording to the scope to say demolish and demolish and replace the three pavilions at Coquina Beach to say demolish three and replace one pavilion at Coquina Beach. For the East Brayington Park Improvements, we added the wording to the scope to say add all appurtenances required for a functional facility. For scope change, on the Ninth Avenue Northwest, Ninety-Second Street Northwest to Ninety-Nine Street Northwest, we changed the wording to say this project is to reconstruct the west end of Ninth Avenue Northwest from roughly Eightieth. It now is saying from Seventy-Fifth Street Northwest to Ninety-Nine Street Northwest. The next one is changing the rationale and it's also stating, so it's changing from to say, oh, if the project is Ninth Avenue Northwest to Ninety-Second Street Northwest, is the same project above, we just restated the change on the street. It says it used to say Eightieth Street Northwest, now it's changing to from Seventy-Fifth Street Northwest. Those are the changes to the public hearing. To finalize for the project and equipment list, I got to say there is a total of two-hundred-and-thirteen projects in the project and equipment list after these changes to the tentative budget. And currently, there's of that list, one-hundred-and-eighteen of those in the CIP itself, of which ninety-nine are active projects moving at this point. Now, I would like to talk about our debt plan and our financing plan. I can't talk about the future without first talking about where we are today. Our outstanding debt currently is in the general government side is two-hundred-and-eighty-nine million dollars, on the public utility is three-hundred-and-eighty-four million dollars. Our our governmental debt includes five bond issuances currently, with total annual debt service as twenty-six-point-two million dollars. These have been ranging interest rates from one-point-seven-four percent to four-point-zero-eight percent. In the enterprise side, we have four current outstanding bond issuances, inclusive of the one we just bonded on March of twenty-twenty-three. The total annual debt service is twenty-two-point-eight, with interest rates ranging from two-point-eight-six percent to three-point-nine-five percent. The county has of the bond ratings, one of the largest, highest bond ratings that any local government or municipality would have. At AAA, we have been confirmed this year. Right now, the market is a AAA market right now, which is enhancing a lot the 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 risk the investors are taking and it's kind of like helping to improve the economy on the municipal bond market a little bit. I wanted to talk about the factors that we are considering into the art debt and financing plan at this point. One is cost increases. As we know, inflation has taken us for the last two years at a higher pace, so we've been having to to consider that all of our projects are are coming higher than estimated at more than fifty percent in some cases and more than hundred percent in some cases. So in our bonding structure, we are utilizing the additional factor of inflation in our consideration of bond issuance amounts. Timeliness of the project. To avoid the IRS implications of bonding and not spending the minimum eighty-five percent spend down allowable within the three years, we are identifying every single project that we put in the financing plan and looking at the timing, where the projects are today, are they ready to start design, or are they going to be far out? And then we are strategizing to bring those bond issuances based on timeliness, so we know that we are meeting that. Market conditions and interest rates, we all know that that that's a bigger, big, big factor, and I will talk about that in a second. Other funding debt opportunities, we've looked at lines of credit. This is not feasible for the for the governmental side. It's more advantageous to bond because of the timing. We don't want to start lines of credit that we only have for three months, only to go around and bond, and we have paid so much variable interest rates. The other opportunities that we're watching very closely, the refunding opportunities on our current outstanding debt. Every time that we identify the the need of a new bonding source, there's the opportunity of finding savings in refunding the ones that we currently have. Right now, we have considered it, but it is not at this point because the market is so difficult at this point. For utility, for the utility projects, the line of credit is a more feasible item because these projects take a little bit longer to build than on the transportation, than on the governmental side. So we are looking into that to initiate our bonding plan with lines of credit and then moving forward with into the one year or two into the bonding. So let's talk about economic market conditions. Inflation rate nationwide, three-point-two percent from the September release, going down from the three-point-six percent. However, in Florida, inflation still remains at five-point-nine percent. Unemployment rate in Florida is two-point-six percent, but nationwide is three-point-six. The market conditions as of September eleventh, on municipal bonds for thirty years are yielding around three-point-nine-six percent. Keep in mind that back in May, we bonded our utilities and our interest rate was three-point-nine-five percent. It has it has been four months and we still see kind of like it's kind of like keeping the same pace. So we are watching very closely. We'll be coming to you. And also, it's worthy to mention stabilizing the economy is what the feds have been trying to do by doing all these stimulus packages that they're doing to to help individuals, businesses, and governments. And all these three items, this is kind of like where the market is today, but really does tell us that there is just very erratic and conflicting signals of where is recession today. So some will say that we are at the recession, but because we have done steps to mitigate some of that, it's not occurring at the as the pace that we were expecting. Some will say we're still more waiting until the end of this year, but it's still yet to come. The Bloomberg experts say that we have a positive view into what's going to happen in the last three months of this year. So with that said, the plan that we have right now. Thank you, Claudia. In our CIP, we have identified on the general government and on the enterprise funds, these are all the projects that have been identified for for bonding. There are eight projects that we have identified to be coming on the first bond issuance that we're going to be bringing forward on October the tenth, a request for the board to approve for us to move forward with bonding. For the governmental side, for a total amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-five, of course, we're adding to that the inflation factor. I will be coming with to the board to brief the board about these upcoming events. And then we have the the other expected plan is for projects that are needing funding from twenty-six to twenty-eight, and this applies for both utilities and the governmental side. We will be coming at a later date. Now, with utilities, we will be waiting, our funding plan is not going to take flight until maybe end of fiscal year twenty-four. As again, we talked about timeliness of the projects, they feel like they kind of like will need them more towards summer to the fall of fiscal year twenty-four. It's worthy to note that in the in the March twenty-eighth approval of the utility rates, these two bond issuances were taken into consideration as we as those rates were increased as well. So they their cash flow is already taken care of to mitigate the impact of all these debt service issuances. So let's go, let's talk about the fiscal, the mileage for fiscal year twenty-four. Nothing has changed. Six-point-two-three-two-six is our county-wide mileage as the board approved. Assess values total sixty-two billion dollars for this year. But to give a little bit of a summary of what the changes that have happened over the last two years, in twenty-two and twenty-three, we the board reduced the mileage by point-two and by point-three. But it's worthy to note that we are doing more in this budget with two years' worth of reduced reductions in mileage. So it is a good note for the citizens to to hear the impacts that we are and what the board is trying to do for the citizens of Manatee County. I would like to talk briefly about reserves. Our total reserves at seven-hundred-and-seven million dollars for this FY twenty-four budget reflects a very healthy reserve balance as the board and the county is very conservative. We know that we are a coastal community. Fortunately, we have not been hit like other neighboring counties have, so we need to kind of like take into consideration that some of these reserves will, you know, help to mitigate this impact. And of course, we know that we are still being the subject to some reimbursement refund from FEMA that we are still waiting. So talking about budget stabilization and twenty percent, we talked about there's in budget stabilization, a total of one-hundred-and-thirty-five-point-seven million dollars. Of the twenty percent, there's the three-ninety-two-point-five. Worth it to say that we have made that cap twenty percent cap at seven-point-three percent. So it's best practice. So let's talk about the truth in mileage process, which we are about to complete towards adoption. We are in the second public hearing and final towards adoption, so I ask the board at this point that we move to adopt the budget for fiscal year twenty-four and accept the mileage rates. We have four motions in the floor. Each one has to be read individually and approved and voted individually by the board. At this point, I ask that the board.
Yes, ma'am. So Commissioner Thatcher was on the board, but no more, he's good.
No, I want to be on it.
Oh, yes, sir. Go ahead, sir.
But well, I don't remember the the procedure. Are we supposed to do public comment before we make those motions or after?
You can make the motion if you like, and we can get it motioned and seconded on the floor, and then I'll hold public comment before we conduct the vote.
All right. So I will move to adopt Resolution B twenty-four dash zero-zero-four for adopted mileage rates for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
A motion by Commissioner Thatcher to adopt the recommended motion. We have a second by Commissioner Ron. We'll open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board regarding the motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Clay.
Could you open that up just for all the motions for the entire budget? Because you don't need to do public comment for each individual motion.
Yes.
You call for public comment on on everything.
We can do that. So there are two other motions. So if you would like to step forward at this time for any of the three motions, there's four? One, two. On your screen. I only see three where it says motion.
It is four, but you could just say, call for public comment on the budget, the adoption of the budget this evening.
Fine. There's only three on my on my agenda. That's all right. There will be four motions, we'll have a surprise motion at the end. If anyone would like to come forward to, we're going to conduct public comment at this time regarding the adoption of the budget and the mileage. So if anyone would like to come forward to address the board, the public comment. Thank you, ma'am. Now is the appropriate time. So ma'am, when you reach the podium, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board.
Thank you. Catherine Edwards, Commissioner Ballard's District. I'd like to talk about the infrastructure sales tax quickly. I'm going to provide a specific incident and then I'll give you a summary. Everybody loves the infrastructure sales tax, all the county departments do, certainly the constitutionals do. I think Manatee County Sheriff, he used to get fifteen percent. I don't know exactly what it is now. But the infrastructure sales tax is used to purchase vehicles. And you notice all the county county maintenance, they got nice, brand-new shiny vehicles. You see the sheriff driving around in nice, brand-new shiny vehicles. It's it's nice. I saw a Manatee County Sheriff's Deputy using a Manatee County truck, four-door pickup, with road gangs. And I thought that was unusual, that he was flashing blue lights. So I brought it to the attention of the sheriff, and the sheriff said, those aren't our trucks. I talked to the county, and the county says, those aren't our trucks, they're the sheriff's trucks. And anyway, to make a long story short, turns out these trucks are county trucks that the county. with road gangs. And I thought that was unusual, that he was flashing blue lights. So I brought it to the attention of the sheriff, and the sheriff said, "Those aren't our trucks." I talked to the county, and the county says, "Those aren't our trucks. They're the sheriff's trucks." And anyway, to make a long story short, turns out these trucks are county trucks that the county has contracted to the sheriff. Now, it seems a bit odd that the county would do that when the sheriff gets his own 15% or more of the infrastructure sales tax, and he can purchase all the vehicles he wants, or whatever he wants to do with that 15%. When I spoke to the county about the fact that the sheriff was using county trucks, and it had blue light capability, they said, "Yeah, the sheriff requires us to fit the truck out so that it can do blue lights and everything else." But it clearly has the county logo on it. Now, that's illegal, and the county doesn't care about that. I'm okay with that. But my question is, why would the county be providing trucks for the Manatee County Sheriff's Office when he can get his own? And what it points to is that there's really a pandemic of malfeasance within the financial management negotiating with our constitutionals. And I think it's something that needs to be addressed. It's not gonna get addressed in this budget, but perhaps in future budgets, somebody will look at it. It just makes no sense that the county would be going, entering into contracts with the sheriff's office and providing vehicles for the sheriff at the same time. I hope, I hope you'll address that in future financial workshops. Thank you much.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board regarding any of the motions that we'll be conducting today, anything on today's agenda? All right. Seeing no one, we're gonna close public comment at this time. We have a motion by Commissioner Thatcher to approve Motion 1 as read, seconded by Commissioner Ron. We've held public comment. No one is on the board for discussion, so we can cast our votes at this time. Madam Clerk, the motion passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Madam CFO, would you please read the second motion?
Yes, sir.
The second recommended motion.
Yes.
Move to adopt Resolution B 24005, which adopts the adopt, the adopted budget for if, for fiscal year '23-'24, which also includes the unincorporated Municipal Services Taxing Unit and the Palmeir Municipal Services Taxing Unit.
So moved.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Thatcher to approve the motion as read. It's been seconded by Commissioner Ballard. We've held public comment. There's no commissioners on the board for discussion, so we can cast our votes at this time. Madam Clerk, the motion passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Madam CFO, if you would please read the next recommended motion.
Yes. Motion 3 is move to adopt Resolution B dash 24 dash 006, which adopts the tentative budget for 20 FY '23-'24 for all identified Manatee County dependent special districts. So moved.
We have a motion to approve as read by Commissioner Ballard. It's been seconded by Commissioner Turner. We've held public comment, and there are no members on the board for discussion, so we can cast our votes at this time. Madam Clerk, the motion passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Madam CFO, please read the next motion under the record.
Motion 4 is adoption of Resolution R dash 23 dash 150 to adopt a five-year capital improvement plan and policy regarding the administration of the five-year capital improvement plan for the fiscal years 2024 through 2028.
So we have a motion to approve as read by Commissioner Bearden. It's been seconded by Commissioner Turner. We've held public comment, and there's no member on the board for discussion, so we can cast our votes at this time. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Madam CFO, do you have any further?
Thank you, Commissioners. At this point, I would like to announce that the aggregate millage rate for fiscal year '23-'24 is 6.6880 mils, and the change from the rollback aggregate millage rate of 6.3271 mils for the operating millage is hereby determined to be plus 5.7%. At this point, our adoption for the fiscal year '24 is complete.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, anything further? Mr. Clay, anything to add?
No, sir.
Mrs. DePaul, anything to add? All right, we're adjourned.